Karen, we're good to go?
We're good to go.
Okay. It is six o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. First server business is the pledge allegiance flag is literally above my head. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everybody. We're going to take things out of order to start. We're going to go to item number six. First, the introduction of the new J.C. Solomon's Elementary School principal. Dr. Vaieta, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabas, members of the committee. In terms of an update, as you know, we had a committee, members of the school committee, parents and faculty staff administrators that worked in a process meeting at DESDEC where we interviewed seven candidates and had three forwarded to me and then having the final selection. Tonight I'm here to tell you that I have gotten into a perfect contract with gentlemen to my right here. This is Dr. John Marcus Stern, if you'd join us as he's coming up. John's got a Ph.D. in educational leadership from Leslie. You have his resume in front of Harvard University Graduate School of Education, Littler State CAGS, and a Bachelor's of Science, co-maori in psych and child studies from TAFs. Fantastic learning institutions. He's currently the superintendent of schools in Stoke, my hometown, as many of you know. I have known John since about 1998 when he became the principal of the Hanson School in Stoke where my daughter actually went to, but John wasn't the principal. John stepping aside from Stoke and wants to come back to the principalship, and we're happy to welcome him tonight. His resume is pretty extensive, including having spent 11 years in private education before moving to public education. John, welcome to the public schools and the JCS principalship.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, everybody. Good evening. It's great to see you all. It's great to be here. I'm excited to join Lancer Nation and do everything I can to keep the great things going over at JCS and keep the community feeling great and supported and happy and make sure the kids are doing the best that they possibly can and our faculty is feeling supported and moving forward. So looking forward to it, excited to be here. It's been a dream of mine to be a principal my whole life, and I'm glad to be back. And I took an off-road route for a while in being a tech director and assistant superintendent and superintendent, and I'm thrilled to be able to have this opportunity to be in a community like Norton and to lead a great school and to work with some really wonderful other administrators. So I can't wait, excited.
So John will staff July 1st with us. He met the staff today in the afternoon. They had cowbells, right, cowbells? Went to first for me, but it went off really well. We got to meet some of the folks. We're going to try to set up an evening Zoom call with families before the end of the school year, just a simple meeting greeting, and hopefully during the summer he's able to meet some families and students when he joins us. So I don't know if the committee has any questions or thoughts.
Very quickly, so Dr. Marcus, you and I met just tonight for the first time. Let me formally welcome you to the district. It's a great district, we're glad to have you. And I will say, while I have not had any interaction with you before, I've kind of a lot of feedback from people, and it's been very, very positive. So I look forward to it. It seems like it's going to be a real good fit.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I'd just like to add that Carolyn and I were in on the interviews, so we interviewed the three finalists. And while we could have gone with anyone, I really feel strongly that we made a really good choice. Just watching him during the walkthrough, interacting with the kids, when he walked into Reed's and started signing with the kids, it was blowing away. So I hope you pick up a little bit more on that because they were really testing you. Well, welcome very, we're pleased to have you.
Thank you.
Agree. I might, again, people reached out to me with nothing but great things to say about you. So really excited. JCS is a special school to many of us because our kids have gone there, all gone now, but it's a special school.
I've been around for a while.
Yeah, exactly. So welcome, looking forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Also, we do some transitioning with John as he can because he's got to wrap up his duties and responsibilities, and I appreciate theness you doing this first because he's going to run back to a building committee meeting in Stoke and we have to go downstairs for the next meeting. So yeah, I'm a boy.
I'll let you get out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you.
Is that the fish tie?
That's the fish tie. There it is. I had to have my purple on.
There you go. Tell your wife you can wear it any day.
She got me a whole slew of purple.
Oh, there you go.
Joe, are we going to stay in order or do you want to go downstairs?
I think we should just go right downstairs so that we'll take care of it. If that's all right with you.
Okay, sure. So we're going to recess for a short bit here to the purposes of going downstairs for the presentation. We will reconvene shortly. I'm not clear if we're going to be able to Zoom what we're going to right now or not.
Not live right away.
Okay, so if those of you who are Zooming in will bear with us, we will be back shortly. So we will be recessed. Thank you. Okay, welcome back, those of you who stayed with us. Appreciate that. And we're going to go to the next item on our agenda and as the vote to approve the minutes of May 6th, 2021 open meeting. And we do have a small problem on those.
Yeah. We want to delete the five zero, all the five zero votes to four zero votes as Ms. Stern was not at the meeting.
Correct.
I apologize for that error. I was a coward as we read them until it got to you, Ms. Stern.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes with that correction.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous? Next up is the warrants. We go to Mrs. Sherry Conover.
I reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrants, May 6th, 2021, $727,713.64. May 21st, 2021, $337,732.91. And then for school payroll warrants, April 22nd, 2021, $1,043,448,44. May 6th, 2021, $968,161.82. May 20th, 2021, $1,023,759.82. I wish to write them into public record.
So not objection. Okay, for those of you following along at home, number three was the presentation. We just want to pass that and go on to number four, the student representative updates. I see we have Malia and Zoe there. How are you guys?
Hi, so this time we wanted to do something else with asking student opinions, and this probably would be one of the last ones for the year as we move into summer. So this time we wanted to do something regarding what students would say if they could ask an authority figure, like any authority figure. We said, you know, superintendent, teachers, staff, on a state level, or like the president, like any authority figure. If they wanted to say something to them, what would they say? So I'm going to start with the JCS. They said some pretty similar answers to pass things, so the question might have been a little bit difficult for them. But they said, get nets to play basketball games at recess. Be allowed to take a break whenever we get frustrated. Being able to be closer to each other. Having the cafeteria back again. Kindergartners allowed to play in the big kid playground so they can mix with the other students. Go on field trips again. Have an outdoor classroom. Be able to play with other grades and bring back art. But we would bring our own materials to class. So they provided a solution for them. So Zoe's going to do the LGN.
So for the LGN, they said, I wish the kids on the bus were quieter. I wish the big kids didn't play on our playground at night. They leave trash and write things on the cement. I wish we could pick classes and have a choice in our learning, which is something similar to a high school student choosing electives. And I wish we had more choices for lunch because the elementary kids only have two choices. Malia's moving on to the Yell.
So for the Yell, they want the big tables back at lunch. They want to be able to sit anywhere and near anywhere they want. Sorry, my audio just cut out a little bit. One student mentioned wanting to have lunch first and then recess, and another student said having recess first and then lunch. So there will always be differing opinions. They would love to be able to use their phones and iPad at any time of the day. To be able to climb the trees. And the student said, yep, that's it, just want to climb the trees. They need soft baked pretzels to be a lunch choice every day to update the PE equipment. It's outdated. They need to upgrade the playground. Similar reasons to PE equipment, old, outdated. And don't do MCAS, especially during a pandemic. But one student said, keep it the same. I love the way everything progresses here. It moved just right for me. Another said, nothing to change. I think it's perfect. And we didn't hear from the middle school this time, so Zoe's going to move on straight to the high school.
Yep, for the high school, it was a lot of similar responses that we've gotten for high schoolers, but they said it was chaotic. But overall, I think things went as well as they could be expected. We should keep the no homework thing in place next year. It was really good for school and life balance. We should still be able to eat outside next year. It felt more controlled this year. There were more rules than a typical year. I hope those go away. And sometimes this year felt interrupted. We couldn't build momentum or we had to skip certain things. That was just in some classes, like when we couldn't do labs or use equipment. I look forward to next year getting back to a better, more normal time. We should keep the coach buses for sports. They have been awesome. Yeah, pretty positive overall, I think. But one changes are, some kids have some good ideas, I guess. But I think that's all we have if Malia doesn't have anything else.
Yeah, I think I'm all good on my end too, but some good responses.
Okay, well, it's nice to know that soft pretzels and full-time workers are key ones.
Focused on the necessities.
Can I add one thing now? And I might be wrong on this, Dr. Vaieta. The reason why JCS doesn't have art this year is because we couldn't get a teacher, correct? It wasn't because of COVID or supplies or anything like that.
No, we had to leave and filling the leave was impossible.
Okay.
So we made a determination of switching electives around. But you know, there's an interesting discussion on the area of electives for younger students. There's some research out there that talks about that it's a motivational piece for young students who maybe don't want to go to art. They want to go to robotics, or they want to go to music and art. I mean, they have to take wellness, that's a mandatory state regulation, but something to look at. I mean, there aren't a lot of schools doing it. It's something that you see a lot outside of Massachusetts. You don't see a lot of it in Massachusetts. But it should be something we should at least study and take a look at. Like some interesting ideas. And it doesn't cost us jobs, it actually increases jobs in terms of needs.
If I could just add, I think, I didn't tell Dr. Marcus, but one of the things that I really appreciated about sort of his experience and interests is that he certainly is a developmentalist.
Right.
And I think that it might be perfect timing perhaps to work sort of with Mrs. Luke to think about what we could do to really offer our lower grades, our elementary students, the opportunity to really sort of build mastery and control and maybe some choice. So, and I think these studies of Piaget might really sort of tie as well with that.
I'm actually wondering, Malia and Zoe, if that's not something that you guys can share? Maybe with Dr. Vaieta? Because some of those things seem like they, you know, it's worth, they're easy to do and it may be worth looking at. So if they share the document.
Right, that's what they, the last one they shared with me, and then what I'm trying to.
And they go in the minutes, I think.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, because I think some of them are definitely doable, and I think it will be nice, you know, especially what we've heard from you guys in the past, that sometimes students don't think they're being heard. I think when you give us feedback like that and some of these things that we can change, I think it's important for our students to know that they are being heard.
Right.
And if there's any way, it might be too late, but if there's any way to let the JCS students know, because if they're feeling that way, I feel bad that they think that they didn't get art this year because of the pandemic. Like that, you know, that wasn't the case. So if we could maybe get a message out to them or something, just, I hate to think that kids think we took it away because of a pandemic. Like, that's not what happened.
Okay, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on, we've got the Anti-Vaping Curriculum Resource Guide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to share, you folks have the actual packet, but I wanted to share this with the public if I may. I believe I have it up there now. So the Massachusetts Anti-Vaping Curriculum Resource Guide is really came together from a combination of a number of people at a wellness committee meeting and a woman who's a RN and doctorate by Nemo Maureen, she's in state, who lives actually here in town, was in our wellness committee. And we started to talk about vaping at the time. This is, this project started in 2019, and then it slowed down, but we kept it going. So long story short, the general information that we started to put together is I sent out messages out to superintendents. We collected information about people to work with. So you'll see at the beginning of this that this curriculum guide, which was just published statewide, literally came from the work of the organizations consisted in this welcome here. And that is, we had an advisory committee and a curriculum committee, and that curriculum committee were practitioners, nurses, counselors, classroom teachers, led by my colleague, Paul, Dr. Paul Vieira, who's now at Douglas, who was an assistant superintendent at the time at Ashland. So we had Superintendent's Association, DESI. We had the Department of Public Health, Mass Health Counselor, Massachusetts School Nursing Association, Mass Association of Public Health Nurses, school leaders, including principals, counselors, school resource officers, RSRO, Sergeant Dennett was the representative there. The Mass Attorney General's Office, Mass PTA, Health Safety and Wellness Initiative, the Mass General Hospital Center for Addictive Medicine, Collaborative Program, the Massachusetts Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, Dance, and Department of Public Health, the Doctorate and Sensation and Prevention Program. I mean, these are all key players and people with tons of experience and background in this area of anti-vaping. So as you flip through this, and this is on our website, we've been kind of the distributing group, if you will. What you'll see, besides the names of all of our colleagues, and I also want to mention that the leaders of this were myself, Paul Vieira, Superintendent Ken Douglas, Maureen, as I mentioned earlier, and Pat Crumby from the Mass Action Coalition. We really were the people that kind of said, hey, let's get, let's do this. We got two grants, $50,000, two $25,000 grants, if you remember. Robert Wood Johnson and then the National Library matched it. So we thank them, and this is their product. This is now published with all of these organizations and their national organizations. And we've been asked to speak at the Wing of Associations and Superintendent's Conference in October to present it. So Paul and I will be doing that. And what it is, is it's a true guide, curriculum guide, brought to you by practitioners. So as you can see, they've actually made recommendations of project here, being the number one recommendation, in-depth program, the second recommendation. How they went about, I decide, was the third recommendation. There's a whole section on treatment options. There's sections here where a student is broken up by elementary, middle, and high school. There's sections here where you can actually click on the curriculum and then click and print an eight half by 11 poster or page that talks about vaping facts. So we hope that this gets some play. We are going to be meeting internally as a district about this. I've given it to our academic coordinator. All of our staff received it, to be quite honest. I meant it to everybody, but Nicole Nunes, who's our academic coordinator with wellness, and I have a scheduled meeting about next steps, probably bringing in some of our wellness teachers and our counselors and our nurses to really take a look at this document and really taking a look at what we want our next steps to be. Because, you know, vaping is back, right? It was gone, it really wasn't. It was just located somewhere else, right? So I just want to thank, one of the things that I really liked about this working group is they actually have a formula, a spreadsheet for how they graded each of these in case of conclusion. So you can challenge it if you want in any way, based upon what they decided. And to be quite honest, we had a Sarah Baines, who's a EDD and PH in Holly Albright from the Hite Lighthouse Wellness and Health Education Consulting. They were huge with this group. All of this paid for by those two grants. Didn't cost anything except the superintendents and the other commissions allowing for their staff members to attend a couple of onsite meetings, and then everything became Zoom and Google Docs because we were shut down, as you remember. So we're really happy that this was published and we want to see it implemented. It's not a perfect document because curriculum is never perfect, perfect, but really happy I was a part of this and that Norton Public Schools took the initiative because we were dealing with our own stuff. As you remember those days, we were talking about vaping. We were talking about things on the ceilings and we're talking about, do we suspend or don't suspend and all this other stuff? So this is the proactive approach. Let's get this into the hands of teachers, let's get it into the hands of kids. And to be quite honest, let's get it into the hands of parents and let parents see these resources. It's all electronic, all online, right on our webpage. You go to it, you click on it, it opens up, and you can utilize it any way that you wish. And we'll be implementing it in the future. I'm taking any questions that you have.
Have we made any gains against the vaping issues that we've? I remember it was a series of like three or four meetings in a row we were talking about it. And then we had presentations and, you know, alerts on phones.
So as I said earlier, the kind of vaping went away when we shut down in Philly in one way. And then it didn't take too long for us to see it when school opened. We are seeing it, all schools are seeing it, everybody's complaining it, and some should perform lesser. I have to say it's lesser. I think some of it is that, you know, we're trying to make sure that the buildings are safe for students to use the bathroom, not have to worry about people vaping and not vaping because you were in there. And I think long term, it's about, you know, when something, when a new product comes into society, we have to react to it. But really, it's a reaction and then it's a planning for long term so that you don't see the vaping news. But the vaping news data is going to be flawed in many ways for this coming year simply because we were out and only half of the kids in, all of that stuff. So really can't give you specifically yet, but yes, we'll get back on collecting that information in the fall.
If I could just sort of add, I think, Joe, one of the, you know, to sort of thank you publicly because I do think that we are so lucky in Norton to have an administration that is proactive and that is really a creative thinker. And I think that you saw this, you know, years ago before anybody else was talking about it. So once again, sort of Norton leading and really a very concerning trend of unsafe behaviors for children. So thank you. I really appreciate it. It's a great document. And I sat in on a couple of the wellness meetings when we were talking about vaping, and I think it was before vaping was really so prevalent. I think it was just starting to kind of hit the radar that this was going to be happening. And I think that's when the discussions started happening. So, you know, we're going back a few years. So thank you for being so proactive.
Thank you.
So the, we're hoping that this ends up in classrooms, being taught, or what is it?
So we're hoping for a couple of different things. The committee released this to the Mass Association of School Committees Executive Director, all school superintendents, and all of the different subgroups of school nurses that have an organization and all of that, counselors' organization. And we've released it to every member of the Board of Ed and the Commissioner of Education and the Secretary of Education, as I concluded, doctoring. We did a one-page press release through the chairman's office via us, and we did a second one just for the press. They got their own, hey, next week this is coming out. And then we sent it to them electronically, and then we sent all of those people a hard copy, so it looks just like the one that you have. We have about 15 of these more left. We're actually going to utilize them with our staff so they don't have to print them if they don't want to. So we're hoping that after we filed it with them, that at some point somebody in DESI says, hey, can we have a discussion about this document? Our folks are reviewing this. Don't forget, we're awaiting a brand-new wellness curriculum from the state. Current one is from 1999. So this potentially could be a resource that they put in that curriculum because there is a section on substance, i.e. not only marijuana and all that, but also vaping. So potentially they could use this. I don't know, but we're hoping that we get. I don't know if the words is recognition. It's the only document like this in the state where people have gone through it and have said, we think that these are the best options, and in most cases, free of charge. We also filed it with the Attorney General's Office because they were members of the group, and they've been a huge proactive anti-vaping group with Maureen Haley's office. So we hope that, you know, somebody above us sees it.
The other thing that makes it so powerful is sort of the multi-collaborative effort of so many districts really working towards one goal. I think that really speaks volumes.
Yeah, and you know, I don't want to keep going on this because I know we have an agenda, but you know, we have Ado Borough, we have West Princeville, Norton, Douglas, we have Walpole, we have school committee member from Walpole, Dartmouth Public Schools, Blackstone Valley Vocational. We have independent consultant in neuroscience and public health on the curriculum committee, Fall River School District, Newbury Public Schools, Eastern Public Schools, Milford Public Schools, and a nurse from Walpole High. So we've hit, and we try to hit different parts of the state as much as possible. And then the advisory group has all of those organizations, if you will, represented, including, like I said earlier, the chair of the Framingham School Committee was part of this original Mass Teachers Association, Parent Teachers Organization was part of this. So the most important part is what you just said, though. The end results is awesome, but the process to get there. I mean, there really wasn't a whole lot of debate. We looked at the data from Massachusetts, we looked at the data from the nation, if you will, at age groups, and then we decided what's the best resources that are available.
I think a big part of this is even before, it sounds like it might take a little while to get it into curriculum and that kind of thing, but we have talked about again and again and again, is suspending somebody the right thing to do? They just go home and do it even more at home. So, and the thing that has always held us back is we haven't had a vaping curriculum course for them to go through. So I would like to see sooner than later that come into play so that we're not just suspending kids.
Right, and I think one of the things that's important too, so that you know, and I'll follow up with Nicole, but as a parent of a ninth grader, I know that's taking the health and wellness class all year. They're doing it, they did an anti-vaping as part of the lesson. But it took that teacher probably trying to figure out where things were. Now we have more control here. That person can, those teachers can still use their supplemental stuff added to this. This is a supplemental guide, right? It's been reviewed by peers to provide you easy access to information instead of having to Google everything and try to figure out. So the team, a good teacher like we have will absolutely take these things that are already organized for them, take the things that they've already found to do, the video clips and all of that, composite into that, into those lessons. Because what's coming next with vaping is at a whole nother level. It's coming, it's true. You know, technology is technology.
I mean, I think this is a good example of, you know, finding the experts in those fields, whether it's, you know, DPH or whoever, and they're guiding the policy. You know, we're not just getting this from the state to implement it with no explanation. We're bringing it to you saying, these are the professionals, these are the masters of their craft, and this is what they say. So I like how we kind of thought a little bit outside the box and we're going to drive the curriculum because this is what we needed to have put in place.
Yeah, and a model really with Maureen's work and Pat's work, bringing in the two superintendents, really, they're the ones who said, hey, if we can get a group of educators together and counselors and experts in the field, and then bringing all these other organizations that we know, we could probably provide, develop something that is age-appropriate and can actually be something that's a fun activity for students to learn about vaping. And the big debate that we had is that the grant is originally written for six to 12, but you'll see in there that it goes down to grade three. And we think that you could take a grade three and manipulate it and make it a kindergarten just by talking about making good choices, you know? So really, really cool.
That's what they say on TV, the earlier you talk about it, the better. Yeah. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to number seven on your agenda, the vote to approve transportation fees for the 2021-2022 school year.
Matt Wells.
Okay, thank you. In the FY22 budget process, we plan for the reduction of the transportation and athletic fees. Both fee changes require a vote of the school committee. So the first one, the transportation fee reduction from $350 per student to $250 per student. We'd like to entertain a vote to set that FY22 transportation fee at $250 per student.
Matt, we have no cap on them?
No cap.
Should we, do we, look at a cap?
We haven't had a cap on the fees.
We have, we have in the past.
We have a cap on the, after, after school fees.
Prior to, Matt, though, we did have caps on transportation and on sports. So I'm curious if we've thought about a cap on transportation.
We, we have had the discussions in the past, but we haven't really had the ability to reduce the fees. This is sort of our first pass to get the fees, actually, we're actually able to keep it in the budget as a reduction at this point. We can certainly look at it and see what it looks like to run a cap moving forward.
Yeah, if you think that this is what we could do this year, that's fine, but let's just keep that, you know, keep that in the distant horizon, keep that on our radar.
Sure.
Any questions about it? Okay, seeing the other questions, I would entertain a motion to reduce the transportation fees to $250 for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Before we move to the next, Matt, general, general cost of the budget on moving from two, $350 to $250 on transportation?
Transportation, I believe it moves roughly about $65,000 into the budget.
Just want to make sure that it's to the record so that people understand that we had to absorb something else in order to be able to pay.
Okay, next up is, I'm ready, the vote to approve athletic fees for 2021-2022. And Mr. Wells, to you.
Oh, the athletic fee reduction, we're bringing the, the fee down from $350 per student sport to $250 per student sport and reduction of the hockey fee from $500 per student to $350 per student.
Okay, and same comment there, let's keep on the radar, cap at some point in the future.
Definitely.
The two sports a year, two kids, you know, a thousand bucks, that adds up really quickly. So.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that?
Might as well ask the question before you vote.
What's the cost of the budget? What's the cost of the budget, Matt?
For that one, I think we moved about 80, 80 to 90,000 into the budget.
Can I ask a question then, just so it's on the record? You commented, Dr. Bayard, that we would need to absorb this reduction. So what is the plan, Matt, to do that?
Well, we've done it.
We've done it. So what is the plan that you've done?
So what we've done to get to two and a half percent is we took your vote, was going to be to affirm this, whatever the number was, 140, 160, out of the actual operating budget expense lines. So it's not costing personnel, but there's a cost to, I mean, we get put in budget.
I just want to make sure that everybody knows it's not a cost of personnel, it's other.
It's expense lines that have been moved out that we're just not going to purchase certain things that, you know, we want to get, that type of thing. And then don't forget that we, in order to balance the budget, we took $400,000 in transportation, which is the money that we won after the fall.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to reduce the athletic fees to $250 per sport with hockey being at $300 for the season for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the vote to approve an appointment of additional permanent building substitutes.
Right, so these, these are a look at trying to resolve our substitute problem by hiring people as soon as possible for September. So they start to work with us as building level substitutes for 182 days and work for us. And I'm recommending a change in the pay that those permanent substitutes that work 182 will be paid $100 per day for the first 91 days and they will be $125 per day for the second 91 days. These are not people that are taking over for teachers for long periods of time. This is the day-to-day operation of the building. So you're out one day, they cover you, cover you. If there's nobody to cover, then they in fact help to secure the building, do lunches, do bus duties and all that stuff. The permanent, the long-term substitutes are people that are, actually have certain credentials and licenses that we have to have in order for them to take over for maternity leave, take over for sick leave. Those do not, are not, are not part of this.
How many do we have right now?
We try to fluctuate, get in two per building and it's never happened yet.
Two per building?
Yeah. So what we're trying to do now in this way is get at least that one, maybe two with some of our builders, but by publishing a fee structure and by trying to publish it now and not in September or in August, we may be able to get some folks that have been doing online teaching in other districts, don't have a job, who are still trying to stay connected to the schools, young kids coming out of college that are thinking about education. This gives them 180 days of work and, and nobody's going to make a, you know, a career out of it, but there might be some folks out there. There's also, you know, potential retiree who's looking for some extra money. This is actually, would probably be in most retirees' cap because they just really want to work in a school building and I know that they went out with a lot higher wages, but this becomes a little bit better.
Is this competitive with other?
I believe that this, I think will be, in this type of scenario, you're going to see us at a higher rate than some of the local school districts. Not sure that that is going to help. I'm actually going after everything else, but we'll see. We'll see, the next vote is trying to address that a little bit more.
Yeah, I saw that.
Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the hiring of one additional permanent building substitute per school for the 2021-2022 school year and change in the pay structure to $100 per day for the first 91 days and $125 per day for the second 91 days.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous? Okay, next up, we have the vote to approve increase in the daily substitute rate of pay.
Thank you. The last time we voted was three years ago. We're moving this a little bit more again and trying to get folks here. Recommended the daily substitute rate to increase from $80 per day to $90 per day for the coming school year. And again, a lot of these situations are people who can work three days a week or just Tuesdays or Thursdays, but hopefully we can get some commitments and start to put away some folks into our group. And we're also really, I can't say it's a huge thank you, $10 a day, but the fact of the matter is it's $10. These people haven't gotten an, if they've been with us, they haven't seen an increase in three years. So I don't think a $10 increase is significant.
Any questions on that? Okay, seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the increase in the daily substitute rate for the 2021-2022 school year to $90 per day and $110 per day for long-term assignments over six weeks.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just want to let you know that our business office, especially Mr. Wells, is not known to be a person who always wants to increase things, but things work and listen to the principals and really listen to the principals and our staff who have been running around trying to fill. And I want to publicly thank the staff who, if people haven't been in a building, to come in in the morning and find out that you're doing totally something else and you're it's, it's not a whole lot of fun as I know one of our members knows because she does it in another district. So I'm hoping, and I thank Matt for taking the lead on that and the principals for making sure that it was part of your vote tonight.
All right, next up, number 11, the NESTIC 2021 Spring Enrollment Update.
Yeah, so you received the fall, if you remember, you received a fall update. I'm going to share this as well, the committee has it. Just wanted to, you know, there's always a lot of discussion about enrollment and we're about to go through some pretty stabilizing years of enrollment. You're going to see that some of these numbers for this year already are off to the positive for going to public schools. I think our enrollment is actually going to be pretty stable compared to, for example, one upper K district is down 300 students right now. That's, that's a lot, that's a lot of loss. So we're going to be pushing our families, of course, but this gives you the breakdown of the data. For example, the historical patterns that you see in that, in that first, second page. The number of students lost, 49 in this year. You're actually going to see that this is a pre-K through 12 enrollment. Most of those enrollments are pre-K for us. That is not necessarily true of other districts. A lot of other districts, it's actually kindergarten, first grade and second grade. That's not true for us. For us, it's, we've seen that dig early on. And by the way, those numbers are currently growing already as we, as we see a return or were growing before this was done. The projected enrollments in terms of pre-K to 12 stabilizing at around 22, 35, that's not going to include somewhere between 150 and 200 school choice because those numbers are continuing to grow and offset our budget, as you know. As you can see in the notation, we're going to see the three-year out for K to five enrollment to slightly grow. Kindergarten is the most difficult to forecast, we all know that. And here's the curve ball. Has anybody looked at the real estate market?
We just had two new kids moving to our neighborhood that are really annoying.
We are going to see a huge shift because they don't last. All of us are getting, you know, some type of mailing that says, would you like to sell your house? I mean, you haven't seen that in about 10 years. And, you know, I'm going to guess the market's going to correct itself at some point, but the fact of the matter is not right now. So I think these numbers for us in this area are actually going to go up, not down for the first time in probably a decade. They're not going to be increases of 60 and 100 kids, but I would project based upon the numbers that I've seen in our enrollment, we're going to go up those 10, 15, 20 bodies and that doesn't include choice, that's just moving into town, sales, that type of stuff. And then, next one just shows the data through 230, again, they're staying down to 21, 28. Again, I already know that when you look at the numbers for 2021, they're wrong because of the basis of things like pre-K, as I mentioned earlier. The next slide is October versus spring. What did we see? So you've got spring enrollment up in K, up in first, up in second, up in third, right? Every single one of those, and again, there's slightly, slight increases in the green, but they show increases and not decline. And then this is your projections over that time based on that K to 12 projection to 2030. And I think that's the last one. So this is new. We've never had the opportunity to do the spring enrollment. So you're going to start seeing a fall enrollment around December for this report, NESTIC, which I remember running for the recommend, the chair of the board this year. And you're going to see it in the spring. This is a new service at no extra cost for us. So it's part of our membership. We get it every fall, well, winter by the time you get it, December is usually when it comes in. And then this is a new one in spring. And I kind of like it because it gets, it gets to see if we've had any churn because remember, we really don't get any new money after October 1st for kids that come to our district there because the budget is based on October 1. There is an amendment to the Senate bill for $40 million to be put aside for the sole purposes of these districts that have lost a lot of kids and getting some type of supplemental money in the fall after October 1. We could be one of those even if it's, even if it's just 15 kids, let's say, but I think what you're going to see is that $40,000 is going to go right out the door real quickly to probably a lot of our larger communities, cities and even suburbs. Happy to take any questions?
Well, Charlie, I think you know, I've mentioned this before, we do NESTIC, I'm mildly skeptical of projections that go on beyond what the current population is. That being said, it's good to kind of get a sense of a baseline, but.
I think, I think one of the things that's important, because I agree with you in a lot of this, because it's really statistical analysis to the best that you can based on the numbers that you're given. And so if your birth rate recording isn't accurate, you're off. If you're not taking into consideration and get accurate data on home building, on what type of buildings are being built, your numbers are going to be off. So all of that is, and that's all public numbers that you get from another, a third source. So, you know, one, one click the wrong way. What's important to recognize, which has always been a problem for the general discussions in Norton, is if you lose 49 students, that doesn't mean you lose 49 teachers. Because that could be two teachers in kindergarten, I mean, two students in kindergarten, two students, that's not going to be the reason to cut an entire street and, and lay off the test. But while we've lost these 500 students in 10 years, remember, we've lost 29 general education teachers, but we've created and brought up our special education support services program. We've gone from 11 specialized programs to 20 and if I know the two people on the screen, Cersei, Mr. Cersei and Miss Russo, that's probably going to go up over the next few years because there's a cost benefit and we believe a better, a good way to support certain populations of students within our own program. There's always going to be other districts because that's just part of the process and some students, that's what they need and we're happy to do that. But I get a feeling we'll be seeing some changes in these departments that I think will also benefit us long-term, including the idea that we maybe want to tuition in students from other districts where we try to tuition like a collaborative does. And those are all on the table discussions that we need to have when we're, when we're creating programs because there is a need for seats. And the need for seats is that parents also want their kids in a regular high school or a regular middle school or they don't want them, you know, in a, a third party. And again, that happens for certain students. For other students, it's best to do it otherwise. So we need to continue to grow our programming so that it fits the needs of students and not, I think what usually happens is, which is we put students into programs. You know, one of my, one of my things that I always worry about is that I want students to be, to move into integration where it belongs. They should be included in every part. And if that means it's only during recess and lunch and during the specials, that's okay. But if we can push more of that, I got a feeling I get two people on the screen that are going to be happy with doing that. At least what I've been hearing. So more to come in the future.
Do you have any questions?
I know one of the things, I think we spoke about it much in the past, is there a way, have we looked into like tuitioning in kids at the preschool level?
So, biggest issue.
Or is there like red tape there?
Yeah, no, it's not a red tape. I mean, you can, you can do it. The issue is that last year, before we hit COVID, based on the prior year's numbers, and I could be corrected, but I believe our, we got to a high number of about 113 preschool resident students. Up from when I started here, the high was 71, right? So just to give enough, because of, I'm just saying because of the program changes that have been made. I think there's going to be more program changes made to Little Lances Preschool in a positive way. I think there's a need for it in many ways. I also think there's a need to, you know, the taboo when no one wants to talk about and that's daycare. I think we need to start to look at daycare programs for our public employees, including our teachers and our staff, our police and fire, as a way to support families, especially coming out of this economy. And that's, those are tuition programs, those are not. And those can be done with third parties, i.e. with Champions. You just have to find space and that's becoming, as we're building more specialized programs, space is becoming more tighter and tighter. People have to recognize that, you know, when we, when we say, hey, four students are going to stay in district for this program, they need appropriate educational space and support. And some of those are very creative. One day, I hope to, maybe this summer, we can take a spin so you can see some of those creative classrooms, what needs to go into to support students in those specialized areas. But yes, I think that's a, if we continue to look at it, Amberie Baker is our preschool coordinator and early childhood coordinator, excuse me, and assistant principal down there and I know she's got some ideas about continuing to look at options.
I think those are all great ideas. I like the one about daycare as well for our, for our staff and a nice collaboration with the town. You know, that employees have that option as well. I think that's, you know, again, another great thing to do for our community.
It's an area that's taken a hit during COVID and right now post-COVID. We're looking at, we're looking at these daycare centers that are not opening up. We have one right now that's informed Champions to take over our kids for before and after school care. So it's not daycare, but it's a Champions Life program that's in town. They're closing. They are sending all of their families to Champions. I believe Matt's still on, I believe that's correct, what I just said. Matt, can you verify that for me?
Yes, Rainbow Kids is closing down. They won't be doing the before or after care and they are recommending utilizing the Champions program.
Wow.
So that's a big.
That's been around forever.
Correct. So, so there's opportunities to offset the Norton Public School budget, once again, like school choice does, bring in revenue. I don't think it's going to be a, you know, million-dollar revenue, but I do think that there's revenue that could be sought after based upon the availability of space and/or looking at space that's, that, that we could utilize that's not within one of our five buildings. That's another way to look at it as well. And we do have a, 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 a partner in Champions that have, as you all know, have been fantastic during COVID. Um, and we've tried to support them as our partners, so we're having some, some background discussions about next steps.
Great.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, um, before we move on to other business, I wanted to really quickly, um, jump in. I guess it is kind of other business, but, um, I wanted to use my limited, completely ceremonial powers to share to, um, shout out a couple of people. Um, first, I wanted to say hi to Sarah Lyons and her LGN first grade class. I was recently at a social event with Mrs. Lyons, and she mentioned that she and her kids would love to get a shout-out, so there it is. Uh, secondly, I wanted to follow up on, uh, recently we had Jacob Berry in for the Project Three Fifty-One.
Yep.
Uh, and I wanted to just kinda close the circle on that. Uh, Mr. Berry ended up getting two hundred and ninety-four bags of clothing. Two hundred and four, which is going to go to the Cradles and Cray, Cradles to Crayons project, which is his project. And I'm sure the ninety other bags will go to some charitable endeavor in some way, shape, or form. So, I mean, absolutely incredible. Uh, I actually saw a picture that his mom had sent him. It's this huge truck full of clothes. It's, it's amazing. So, uh, congratulations, Dan, that's excellent effort. Any other business?
So, um, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, graduation is next Friday, the fourth of June.
Oh, that's Friday, wow.
At five thirty P.M. Jim, I hope you're ready for your long-winded speech.
I should start that speech, yeah.
The rain date currently is Saturday at five thirty P.M. Okay, so we're hoping that we don't have to have another rain date after that. Uh, the weather for Friday, it's got some thunder shower questions, um,
That's a, that's, yeah, that's the, yeah, the
Um, this is like calling a snow day. It could be worse, they could be under more heat than ever before. But we're gonna try to do the right thing. Also, uh, information going out to families, as we know, the Commonwealth pretty much opens up on the, on the twenty-ninth. Um, so there'll be some more flexibility information going out about graduation. That should be beneficial to families. Um, so I'll let Principal Donlaman send that out to the senior parents first so that they can see that the rules are kind of expanding, if you will, and allowing for us in school settings to have a little bit more flexibility as well.
For us being there, are masks, we don't, we do not have to wear masks outside, correct?
So we're, we're, we're working on the specifics of people and how we sit versus, you know, all of that stuff. So we're gonna send something out to you so that you know.
They'll just let us know.
Yeah, I'll let you know. But, um, it is on the football field like last year. Um, it also encompasses, uh, class night as part of it, uh, which I, I think, you know, some people don't like, some people do like. It is what it is, we had to plan. Um, so, um, but if anything, there will be more people there to recognize all the students that are being recognized in, um, in some way, shape, or form for, um, and you've all been asked to participate in that if you would like.
Yes.
And class night will be prior to it, is that how you know?
Right, it's kind of a, yeah.
Right, or is it right?
Right, exactly. Yep, yep.
So they'll, they'll actually walk in, is it, we're starting graduation?
Yeah, I don't have the specifics, but traditionally, and in my prior years as a principal, that's, we had, uh, we had a, uh, awards recognition, scholarships, if you will, and it was, it was actually put into the graduation ceremony, but, yeah. Looking forward to it as always, um.
I think a lot of districts actually do that, don't they? Don't they sort of do their awards during graduation?
Yeah, so you'll see, for example, Joe Vieta, and then I, I walk up and then they roll all the scholarships. You get in, you have a Gail Adams scholarship, you go in, you get this scholarship. The only issue I have with that at times is that the student name gets announced and they don't get recognized for anything. But graduations is culminating activity, so it is what it is.
I mean, I, I think having it at least as part of graduation is like the, the necessary, uh, the necessary evil to do. I mean, last year being virtual, it was, there was, you know, little to no recognition for those kids. And I mean, we're doing our best with what, what the, the cards were dealt with.
Right, and what, and I appreciate you saying that, Dan, but we know that people didn't wanna do it virtually, number one. Number two, we, when we made these decisions, because a lot of people go into these decisions and a lot of moving parts, we were still worried about one thing. If we have an outbreak during that class night, we can't hold a graduation, either with those kids impacted or at all until another date. And we just, we just think that graduation is the culminating activity. Um, and we do have a prompt, and again, those rules even free-earn out, which is great for the kids. Um, and I'm sure they're gonna be great, but that's on Tuesday, the eighth, if I remember correctly. Um, and
I think the other thing is that when you were making these decisions, um, nobody knew that the state was going to sort of loosen its guidelines. So I think, you know, you're sort of projecting weeks or months in advance, assuming that you have to sort of abide by what is currently the guideline, so.
I, I found out from a parent about changes in the regulations. It was never told to a single one of the two hundred and seventy superintendents in the Commonwealth. They were decided over the weekend, announced at a press concert at eleven o'clock. And in eleven oh two, I had a, I was in another meeting, and eleven oh two, I got a tech, an email from a parent demanding that, um, you know, no mask during recess, so on and so forth. And then you saw the emails, I started that process of communicating, you know, it's a process. It is what it is. We are having some issues with some students, uh, to be quite honest, older students. Uh, younger students continue to just wanna be together and so on, but we have some older students who are, uh, pushing back and don't wanna wear it. And I think next week is gonna be an interesting week because of the announcement. And, you know, I'm on record with the administration at the high school, I have no problem sending them home. I have no problem.
But the announcement, I'm sorry to interrupt, but isn't the announcement that in school, this does not impact school decision, right?
It does not impact schools, but that doesn't mean we don't have kids who wanna come to school and decide that they wanna do it the way that they wanna do it.
Well, and it's also vaccinated people too, right? Which, I think they're very specific.
It's, it's
They're recommending that it's not that. But I think very specifically, the schools were not changing regardless, I think about this.
Correct, right. Destiny has not moved the needle for us on the issues of being in a building. They have moved it on us when students are outside, um, as you know. But they have not moved it, uh, inside as, as of yet.
So I think that they can be vaccinated, but they still have to have a mask on inside, and that's just per state regulation.
I'm just walking up to people saying, show me your vaccine, Karen, so I can take out my mask. I, I mean, it's an, it's the honest system again. We already went through this one, so hopefully, I mean, it's great to know that we're getting here.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna see a hiccup that takes us backwards. That's, that's the thing that gives us the most, all the most.
Yes. Well, actually, I'm glad that you went first. My only other, um, order is that I did read the essays. I believe there were ninety-seven of them, um, for the Abigail Addos, so at least ninety-seven students will be getting at least some kind of scholarship. I, I believe it was over thirty thousand dollars that were given. The class is a hundred and ninety, or a hundred and
I don't have the number, so I don't wanna give you a number, that's wrong.
It's about a hundred and eighty, so those students that didn't write an essay for the, you know, sorry. We, we gave money out to everybody that wrote an essay. Um, the thing that struck me about our essays this year, first of all, extremely well-written. Um, really answered the question, which was, uh, what, what obstacles or what challenges have you had during your, your, uh, years at Norton Public Schools? And what did you learn and how will you bring that forward? Really thoughtful questions. Um, two things really struck me. First of all, how many students we have that have lost a parent or somebody extremely close to them? Um, and how that can rock your world, I mean, and, and how they've come through it and how proud I am of them. I mean, some of the stuff that is in there is just mind-blowing. Um, the second thing was in times of crisis and that kind, I'm gonna pull a Sherry and cry. Um, in some of those times of crisis, they had their sports.
Right.
And if we had ever taken that away.
Exactly.
But, that's all.
Thank you, Sherry.
That is a Sherry. See?
Sherry two, Sherry one.
I'm so proud right now.
What, that is not you?
Where's that, where's that money come from?
Um, it's the caber, and she was a woman who's, I don't know if she went to Wheaton. I tried to look it up because somebody else, um, uh, Jack was the slechman on it, and he had asked that. And I tried to look it up, I couldn't find the information. In the packet, there is a, a blurb about what it is. I don't know if she went to Wheaton or whatever, but she has some kind of setup that, I mean, it's thirty thousand dollars at least, they should, the last four years I've done it.
That's really
I just have, um, two things, cause I think this is our first meeting back since town meeting. So I just wanted to publicly thank, um, the townspeople of Norton for supporting the debt exclusion. Um, that was many, many years of a lot of hours of work that went into that. Um, you know, and I, I truly appreciate the town seeing the value in a new town hall, a senior center and our senior and community sports center and an athletic complex. I think that that really will put Norton on the map. Um, I, I'm, I'm proud, you know, listen, no one likes to pay extra taxes, but I'm, I'm proud of the townspeople for seeing the value in that. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention was Monday, the Memorial Day ceremony at the Town Common at ten A.M. Um, Mr. Cameron, who runs the, um, BFW in Norton, is, um, donating five prisoner award chairs went for each of the schools. And so a number of us will be there to accept that, um, truly amazing gift for him. It, it was, you know, during a tough year of COVID, he was able to put that together. So I just wanna publicly thank Mr. Cameron, um, and the, the schools. We saw the middle school and the high school, um, YouTube videos.
Yeah, like you brought, yeah, so we'll put those
They were amazing.
Yeah, so our students, through the social studies department and staff at the middle school, um, um, put together their own videos, I sent them both to you. Um, again, this is one of the only school systems that I know of that still continues on Veterans Day and Memorial Day to really recognize its local, uh, veterans. Um, and I think that's kinda cool, um, because it's not something, I've always, you guys have heard me say that I think these are two days that we should be in school. They should be two days that we are, um, you know, not going to our cottages and all that other stuff that some people do, but to actually go to school and, and read and write and participate with veterans and have days that are just connected to that, that pride and that, that connection to, 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 to veterans, but, um.
Is there any way to share those two videos with Estelle Flett, the veterans agent, and maybe somebody like Gary Cameron?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, you know, both of those people would truly appreciate seeing what the schools put together cause they, they did an incredible job.
I, you know, I, I haven't watched the middle school video yet, I'll, I'll watch that later. But the high school one was, it was kind of amazing to see the amount of connections that our students had to veterans. You know, I mean, I think though, it was a different time back when our family members were in the armed forces. We don't see that too much now, obviously, but, um, you know, it was like a great uncle. I, there was, um, I recognized one of my, my daughter's tennis player friends, who they were a member of the Indian Armed Forces for the country of India. Um, so to have that connection, a worldwide connection of armed forces was, was tremendous. It was, it was very good videos, well done. Awesome, kudos to the, the social studies team at the high school.
It's awesome.
Um, sorry to, sorry to keep this going, cause I know we don't wanna get hurt. Uh, Sherry, thank you very much for bringing out the, um, the debt exclusion vote. I appreciate that, it, it slipped my mind a little bit or not. Um, I, I, I wanted to say, well, I think a, a ton of people put a ton of work into that and, and went above and beyond. I, I do wanna recognize you, Sherry, for, for the work you put in there. Because I know it was, it was near and dear to your heart. You put blood, sweat, and tears into that, heart and soul, uh, and, and honestly, I don't know that it gets done without you. And again, I, I realize and recognize there were a lot of people involved in it, but certainly from, from the school committee perspective, I think you did a lot of stuff on that. You know, you got things coming here, that's, so thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. Definitely a team effort, but appreciated, thank you.
And I, and I know that you never want to, you know, I know, I know why individuals are worried, but you know, it's students do.
Please don't cry.
I might, yeah, Vanessa, if you cry, I'd be so proud.
Here's the hammer.
Trust me, I am sorry, we
Get the, I'll hit him with a hammer.
Yeah, you break my foot, I'm Uh, anything else for we
I know, uh, enjoy your Memorial Day weekend, and I'll see you Sunday, you on Monday, ten o'clock at the Town, Town Common. And we are working with, um, the veterans agent on a potential, um, having to move at least a certain amount of people indoors and use the schools if that needs to happen. Right now, so we're not thinking it doesn't, but because of the weather,
Oh, okay.
we will support the vendors, we may, we may house everybody. That's gonna just have to be a last-minute call, but, um,
So can you let me know, cause I have some of the sports teams.
Yep, yeah.
We'll have to get word out to them. Okay.
As soon as they'll make the call on what they wanna do, if it's pouring rain and they wanna do it outside, I'm fine, I'll be there. If they wanted to kind of, you know, move certain people inside and still have the ceremony taking place, but I think it's important, we'll do that.
Anything else? No? All right, I would entertain, uh, sorry, next, uh, next school, meeting meeting's gonna be Thursday, June tenth at six P.M. We're here at the middle school, it will still be rolling for those who are not. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?